Here's our work.
Recording in progress.
Good morning. I will call to order the April 4th, 2023 meeting of the Napa County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can you please take the role?
Supervisor Cottrell?
Here.
Supervisor Pedroza?
Here.
Supervisor Gregory?
Here.
Chair Ramos's excuse today and asking as chair is Vice Chair Gallagher.
Here. All right, can we have Dr. Wu please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, Madam Clerk, you had an announcement regarding the agenda?
Thank you Chair. If anyone here is here today because they saw the notice for a public hearing in the Napa Valley Register last week about an ordinance on speed limits, that matter is not on the agenda today. It is being continued for the public hearing for the ordinance for speed limits and it will be republished and we will hear it on April 18th at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three, approval of minutes. Clerk of the Board requests approval of minutes from the March 28th, 2023 and March 30th, 2023, regular and special meetings. Does anyone have any corrections? Is there any comment on the minutes?
Move of approval?
Second. Okay, motion by Pedroza, second by Cottrell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. We have two presentation, actually three presentations and commendations. First is Ms. Bruseno here.
Good morning Chair and Board of Supervisors. I'm Faye Newton Shannon. I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources here for Director Bruseno. We are going to present our new hires to you today.
Great, thank you.
So we have nine new hires, all filling full-time vacancies.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa Velasco. I'm from the County Executive Office, Human Resources, Senior Office Assistant.
Thank you, congratulations.
Hi, my name is Marisa La Centeno, Library Associate One for Napa Library.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Teddy Morrow. I'm the Staff Services Manager in Fiscal and Health and Human Services.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Khan. I'm an Assessment Records Assistant for the Napa County Assessors Office.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Robbie Young. I'm an Assessment Records Assistant One with the County Clerk's Office. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Jill Templeton. I'm a mapping technician. I moved from ITS over to the Assessors Office.
Welcome.
Good morning, G. Sannie, ITS Department, Information Systems Specialist Level Two.
Welcome.
Hello, my name's Nicole Price. I'm Office Assistant Two for Planning, Building and Environmental Services.
Welcome.
Good morning, Amanda Meyer, Office Assistant Two for PBEs.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have the presentation, item 4B, Presentation of a Proclamation to Dr. Christine Wu, Public Health Officer and Deputy Director of Health and Human Services Agency, declaring the week of April 3rd through April 9th, 2023 as National Public Health Week 2023 in Napa County.
Thank you. Good morning.
I will go ahead and read the proclamation and then please, will you speak after that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here. So this is really fun to be able to do this proclamation. A public health department is very near and dear to me. So we're going to proclaim National Public Health Week, April 3 through 9, 2023. Whereas the theme for National Public Health Week is 2023 is centering and celebrating cultures and health. And whereas the goal of National Public Health Week in 2023 is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas there is significant difference in health status such as obesity, poor mental health and drug use among people living in more rural areas compared with people living in urban areas. And this variance increases because rural residents are often more likely to face social determinants that negatively impact health such as poverty, transportation barriers and lack of economic opportunity. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, mitigate and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as the COVID-19 pandemic, natural disasters such as wildfires flooding and severe storms, and other disasters including disasters caused by human activity and public health emergencies. And whereas public health professionals collaborate with partners outside of the health sector, including city planners, transportation officials, education officials and private sector businesses, recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. And whereas in communities across the United States, individuals are changing the way they care for their health by avoiding tobacco use, eating healthier, increasing physical activity and preventing unintentional injuries at home and in the workplace. And now therefore be proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this fourth day of April 2023, does hereby proclaim the week of April 3 through April 9, 2023 as National Public Health Week in Napa County. We call upon our residents to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers and leaders to better understand that we can make our communities healthier, safer and stronger when we support and stay engaged with one another, particularly in light of this year's theme, centering and celebrating culture and health.
Thank you so much for reading all that. I will cut that from my speech. Okay, so thank you so much Chair Gallagher and the Board of Supervisors. Christine Wu, Deputy Director and Health Officer for HHSA. And I'm, you know, very gladly accepting this proclamation on behalf of all the public health staff who are working very hard this morning. Over the past several years, the world got to know one aspect of public health's work and that is the control of infectious diseases such as Legionnaires, tuberculosis, measles and COVID-19. And I want to reiterate that, you know, the theme for this year's National Public Health Week, centering and celebrating cultures and health really focuses on how everyone should be able to have a chance at a long and healthy life, feeling like we belong, being a part of communities and fostering cultural connections supports our health and quality of our lives. The Napa County Public Health Staff is really excited to continue our community partnerships, to look at how cultural connections and intersections affect our health, well-being and the public health system that cares for us. And in honor of National Public Health, we plan several activities this week to bolster our staff's resilience building, including learning about several happiness life hacks that if continued daily over 21 days, hopefully becomes a healthy habit. Our celebration culminates in a community health fair on Sunday, April 16th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Fuller Park. We are again bringing together many of our community organizations and county programs to offer health and safety information, resources, family-friendly activities and a variety of free health assessments for our community. And I do hope all of you are able to come and join us at that affair. And if you do, please let me know so I can make sure that I'm there to, you know, show you around. And I'd like to just quickly introduce a few of the team members who are here with me today. They can just state their name and the program that they're with. And of course, you know, Jennifer Yassimot is here with us too. So then we'll take it, go and take the picture.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm Lisa Fletcher, Public Health Manager.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hen, Public Health Manager with Chronic Disease and Health Equity Programs, as well as Epidemiology and Outbreak Response.
Thank you and thank you all for being here. Let's go ahead and take the photo.
Thank you so much for declaring this week as Public Health Week. Really appreciate that.
All right, great, thank you. We're on to our next proclamation. We are going to present a proclamation to be received by Chris De Natale, who is the President and CEO of Arts Council Napa Valley, to recognize April 2023 as Arts Month in Napa County. And I'll go ahead and read this first. Okay, whereas the month of April has been recognized as a countywide celebration of the arts and local culture known as Arts in April, Napa Valley, by dozens of arts and cultural organizations, hundreds of individuals and businesses across the county, as well as by Arts Council Napa Valley for 13 years. Whereas the arts and culture embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect and imagination of humankind. Whereas the arts and culture enhance and enrich the lives of every resident. Whereas hundreds of residents from each town and city came together in the creation of the County of Napa's adopted Community Cultural Plan, which has been in place since 2008 and endorsed the following cultural core values for all of Napa County. Self-expression is everyone's birthright. The arts serve as a common language. The arts are critical to a healthy economy. The arts allow us access to our past, to ourselves and to each other. And the arts give us a sense of place and home. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this fourth day of April 2023, does hereby recognize April 2023 as Arts Month in Napa County. We call upon all residents to take interest in, celebrate and promote arts and culture within their own communities and across the county. Chris, very nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
Do you like to say a few words?
Napa County is a destination for arts and culture and it only is so because of an investment in our local artists and arts organizations. I thank the County of Napa for that investment and encourage everybody during our Arts Advocacy Month of April to celebrate our Napa County arts and artists. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and do that photo. Okay, I neglected to mention that we do have an item 13A that we will be hearing at 9:30. We're as close to that as possible. Okay, Ms. Craig, do we have any department head reports or announcements?
Yes, we do. We have Public Works Director Steve Letterer here to give us the latest report on local damage related to storms.
Great, thank you, Mr. Letterer.
Thank you Chair Gallagher, members of the board. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation I'd like to show you.
All right.
This is primarily focused on Mount Vida Road. So as the board knows, back in January, we had seven major storm site damages, three of which were on Mount Vida Road, one was on Dry Creek, one on Redwood, one on Steel Canyon. I don't think that adds up to seven, but those were most, where most of them were. So specifically on Mount Vida Road, that is where most of the damage was. I'm just going to start at the bottom, the south end of the road and work my way up. At these two sites were actually subsequent storm damage sites. These occurred in March. So at mile marker 1.0 and at 1.1, we had two areas where the edge of the road collapsed, as shown in the pictures. The cause of these were basically the creek, which you can see in the left-hand picture is right below. Eroded the soil that was holding up the road and those two edges collapsed. We believe our Roads Department can fix these two, which we hope to start working on in the next week or two and hope to complete within about a month or so. Next slide, please. Working our way up, this is Mount Vida Road 3.75. This was the largest of our slides. This picture was taken just a few days after the collapse. If you drove up there now, it would look different because we have a lot of erosion control in place and whatnot. But so this was actually the largest of our slides. The failure method here was most likely groundwater, basically coming under the road and liquefying the soil under the downhill lane, the, what would that be, the eastern lane. So this one, because of the size of it and because of our obvious concerns that we don't want to lose the other road, we jumped into the design on this on an emergency basis. We hope to be going out to bid on this one either this week or next week, actually. Opening bids on May 4th. We then come to the board to award the construction contract and hope to be able to complete this one this summer. This was one of the original slides. It is eligible for FEMA funding to the extent that we can get FEMA to do their thing. And we're, estimated cost on this is about a million and a half dollars. The next slide, please. This is just up the road a little bit, a mile marker 3.99. This one is actually right next to a slide we had at 4.0 from the 2017 storms. It's just an area of instability, as shown, as I said, it slid in the, a little bit north of this slid in 2017 and now this piece went in 2023. This is on a fast track, but not emergency basis. The goal is to have the design completed in June and be out to bid and again, complete the repair before it rains again in the fall. Also about a million point five dollars eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Next slide, please. So this is a new slide that came up about eight to 10 days ago. This is Mount Vida Road 6.15. This one had a different mechanism of failure, if you will. This is a case where the slide actually started several hundred feet above the road and continues for several hundred feet below the road. So in this case, it really had nothing to do with the road. The road was simply in the way of a much larger landslide. This section of the road is actually closed right now. This picture was from, I think, three or four days ago. But it actually looks much worse now. It's continued to move. The humps in the, on the left side of the road, looking at the picture, have gotten bigger. The piece on the right that slid away has slid further. So this is going to be a very significant repair. In the short term, we hope once it stops moving, which it hasn't done yet, but given, hopefully, we're done more or less with the rain, although I do see now there's rain in the weekend forecast, which kind of popped up. But anyway, when it stops moving, our hope is that we may be able to get in and kind of bulldoze that uphill lane and get it flat enough to at least open one lane of traffic. If we're successful at that, that would take about two to three weeks from the time that it stops moving. And again, it is unfortunately at the moment still moving, so it needs to dry out, stop moving and then we'll try and do a temporary repair, which would get the road back open to one lane. We are treating this repair again as an emergency, but it just happened and we're hoping to basically begin construction in June of '23 and again, finish this summer. Very rough cost estimate at this point, again, about 1.5 million dollars. But we're really just getting into this one because it just happened about a week and a half ago. So this is where, this is where the road is closed. So basically, anyone who lives below 6.15 can access their property from the south and anyone who lives above 6.15 can access their property from the north. Next slide, please. This is Mount Vida Road 6.25. Again, this was from the January storms. It's just north of 6.15. This is an area that the slide was actually most likely caused by excessive runoff overwhelming the culvert that was there. So it's interesting, each of these sort of have a different mechanism of failure. It's the nature of Mount Vida Road, I guess. In this case, because the road continued to wash away, we installed steel plates over the one lane that was available and also widened the road out a little bit on the uphill side. So we've been, excuse me, been able to maintain one lane access here. So those are the ones that I have pictures for, or slides for, if you will. There are a number of other locations on Mount Vida where we have uphill slides where basically the dirt from the uphill has come down and blocked one lane. There's no particular damage to the road. There's just a lot of dirt sitting on top of it. Those will work on us as time allows, as there are probably a half dozen of those on Mount Vida Road. But there are dozens on other roads as well, so we're kind of working our way around those on the cleanup. But those are, those are just a matter of hauling away a bunch of dirt when time and resources allow. So basically, that's where we are. Our hope is to, and our goal is that all of these repairs on Mount Vida be done before the rains in the fall. And hopefully, we'll be able to get that section of 6.15 open in a few weeks if the mountain and the weather cooperates.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Director Letterer?
I'd just like to say thanks to Director Letterer and your staff for, you know, being all over this and having a plan. Quite a few residents are reaching out, as you'd imagine, and the fact that we're going to do most of this this summer is, they're very happy about that because they're used to it taking several years. So I just want to say I appreciate that and my colleagues for blessing this new approach that we're taking. Thank you.
Supervisor Pedroza?
Thank you Chair Gallagher. And, you know, I like Mount Vida. I go to Mount Vida often. I cycle it. So that's just a disclaimer, but, you know, I will say Director Letterer, I am interested in looking at what is that long-term solution? And I don't know what that costs, but I do think we owe it to the residents of Mount Vida to look at it more comprehensively. Because right now, we're responding to every failure. And I think, you know, you and I went to, you know, Circle Oaks recently and we looked at some of the work they did on 128 in terms of some of the retaining walls that were very pricey and expensive, but it was the right thing to do. And I do think we owe it to look at Mount Vida a little bit more comprehensively. It may be a big sticker price, but then we start creating a plan for it, Director Letterer. So I don't know if we've done that before, but I think it's just, instead of reacting to, it'd be great to take a proactive approach to what the need might be.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Pedroza. We actually did that in 2013. We had a geotechnical assessment.
None of us were here then.
Of the entire road and there were a number of areas that were identified as potential failure areas. Of the entire road, um, and there were a number of areas that were identified, um, as potential failure areas. And we actually worked on those, um, over the years and, and addressed all of those. Um, but, uh, again, the difficulty is the failure mode is, is different in each case. If it was just a matter of drainage and culverts, you could say, okay, we need to put all our efforts into drainage and culverts, which we still need to do that, that's, that's still a factor. But if the, if the problem is groundwater under the road, or if the problem is, um, a bigger slide where the road simply gets in the way, there's really, you know, there's, there's really no preventive answer, uh, to get out in front of that. So, um, your point is well-taken and I agree, we should do that again. Um, but unfortunately, it's just the nature of, um, the west side of the valley. Redwood, Redwood Road is the same, Dry Creek somewhat is the same. Um, we do have two slides on, um, Dry Creek, Upper Dry Creek, that we're also gonna work on this summer. Uh, one at nine point seven five and the other at eleven point six. I don't know what happened to my voice.
Let me help you out Director Letter. So thank you for that. So I think you, you've answered the question coming back and providing a comprehensive plan. Look, you know, our, our constituents have been willing to tax themselves, right, for the betterment of roads. We, this board is putting money into the general, from the general fund into roads. So there, uh, the resources are going into roads. I just want to make sure our constituents or residents know this is what we're doing. And if we need more, you know, here is a plan and here's how we would manage those resources. So to me, I'm, I'm, I'm really interested in that plan and that vision of what does that look like? So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you Chair Gallagher. Um, yeah, I wanted to echo my colleagues in first the thanks and then I appreciate Supervisor Pedrosa's question about the plan. Um, and, uh, it's good to hear what you've said, that that makes sense, that when we're looking at multiple different causes. Uh, for example, you mentioned on six point two five, it was, the culvert was overwhelmed. So just like you were saying, I'm wondering, you know, if we have a plan to, um, expand the capacity of culverts there, that gets to part of the issue, but not the whole issue. Um, so I guess the second part of a question like that is a little bit about planning for storm response. Um, your team has been amazing in its ability to be responsive in a short timeframe to not just things on Mount Vida, but roads all over the county. Um, so when there is a dry moment and, and more time, it would be great, um, I think for me and hopefully my colleagues to, to hear from you, uh, where the pinch points were in terms of your resources. You know, staffing, materials, dollars to respond. Um, because I think there's planning, um, to, for prevention, but also planning for response. Um, because we know we will have another stormy year like this, whether it's next year or five years. And what are lessons that you're seeing this year that you could help us understand for the future?
Yeah, I'll be happy to, happy to do that. I, I will say to basically answer your question, the pinch point is always resources. The roads department is twenty-seven people. Um, and are, you know, four hundred and nineteen centerline miles of road. Um, when it comes to emergency, um, you know, there's, there's never going to be enough people. So, um, that, that basically becomes it. That being said, there are certainly things we can do to, um, that, that we do do to be as prepared as we can. And I'll be happy to talk to you all about that.
Thank you. And I just echo what my colleagues have said and, and thank you so much for presenting today.
You bet.
Okay, uh, we have no special district consent items. Um, we have our consent agenda and, uh, nothing has been pulled from that. Um, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar. Oh, public comment. Anyone have a public comment on the consent calendar? All right, see none? Can I get a motion?
Second.
Moved by Pedrosa, second by Cottrell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is done. Um, all right, we are on to agenda item nine, public comment. For all matters not listed on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and Special Districts. Um, does anyone in the audience have any public comment? All right. We are going to, let's see, move to, we have nothing under, um, item ten. We're gonna move to nine thirty, item thirteen A. Let me just find it here. This is a set matter, um, risk and emergency services. This is, risk and emergency services manager requests the Board of Supervisors receive presentation of the county's transition from NICSIL alerts to Alert Napa County powered by Everbridge. And welcome. I think you need to click your, um, microphone there.
You see everyone do that on the, on the video and you don't think it's gonna happen to you? Am I on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And I know we have a, um, PowerPoint presentation. Struggling with that just one moment.
Oh, it's okay.
Do introductions and all. Okay, great, great. Well, good morning Chair Gallagher, members of the board. Kendra Boyer with the Office of Emergency Services.
Good morning Chair Gallagher and members of the board. Brianna Jones, Emergency Services Officer, Office of Emergency Services.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like us to, to wait for the presentation?
Um, you can get started if you're ready or if you need to wait for a moment.
That's all right. Okay, all right. Well, this morning, uh, we're here to speak with you about the, and give you a presentation on the rolling out of Alert Napa County, which is our new alert and warning platform. Alert Napa County will be replacing, um, our current platform, which is the NICSIL system, which most of you are, well, I say a majority of you are well aware of. Um, but no, no worry to those of you who, um, are currently subscribed via the NICSIL platform. You'll still receive your notifications the same way that you always have. Um, and we're gonna speak about that later in the presentation. While we do understand the community is familiar with, um, the NICSIL brand, we also understand that, um, companies are bought and sold all the time. And so by rebranding to Alert Napa County, we're really excited to hopefully alleviate any confusion that may happen in the future if plat- new platforms or logos, um, are changed or if new platforms become available to the county. Thank you. All right, so to start with the ba- to start with the basics, um, what is an emergency notification? So we have the ability to send out three different types of notifications and each type has its own place and its own time. So for example, you'll see up here on the screen, the large piece of the pie, the yellow piece of pie up here. Those are our advisory categories. So these are your types of notifications that have important information, possibly time-sensitive information that, um, but they may not necessarily require, um, an action to be taken. So those are gonna be your, um, road closed due to a mudslide such as, um, Director Letter was just speaking about. Um, you've also seen those lately, I imagine. And then, um, those would also be where the, um, you'll see smoke in the sky, but no fire and, uh, within Napa County. That's where those types of notifications live. There's also, um, you'll see on the smaller pieces of the pie there, that green piece of the pie. Um, those are gonna be your community type of events. And those are also events, um, that don't really require attention, but it's good information that the community would like to have, such as pre-planned road closures for your parades or marathons and things of that nature. Now, the red, the, the medium-sized red piece of the pie there, that's where our critical notifications live. So those are your evacuations, your missing persons, your shelter in place. Those are really our, our life safety concern type messages. I'm really grateful that piece of the pie is not bigger than it is. All right, so here's a look at the way that emergency notification subscriptions in Napa County have grown over the years. Can anyone guess what percentage we've grown since just before the twenty seventeen fires? Six hundred and seventy-seven percent. Just over a hundred and thirty thousand additional subscribers to the NICSIL platform that we currently have. So when emergency notifications were introduced to the community, um, we didn't have the need to communicate as much and as often in the manner which we do now. So that's why it's really important, um, that we are always looking for ways to be innovative and make sure that we're sending the most pertinent messages, um, in a variety of different ways. So through technology changes and, um, a bunch of other different situations, that's why we're working to always make sure that we, um, are being innovative.
Okay, so why did we transition to Alert Napa County? Residents that subscribe to the previous NICSIL system have been merged into Alert Napa County. If they choose, they don't have to do anything to receive notifications. Customization features will not be accessible through the NICSIL system. So we do encourage everyone to sign up for a member account with Alert Napa County. Alert Napa County gives residents the option to create a member account, which allows the resident to customize where, how, and when they want to receive their emergency notifications. Some notifications, such as one sent countywide, you'll not be able to opt out of an Alert Napa County. But with the availability to customize notifications by more than just a zip code, you will receive less notifications that are not specific to your area. Countywide notifications that you will not be able to opt out of. Examples include evacuation warnings, evacuation orders, weather, traffic, and health advisories that affect the entire county. Alert Napa County has benefits not just to the message receiver, it benefits the message sender as well. Agencies with accounts in Alert Napa County will have the availability to utilize the report and statistics features to understand information generated from the public notification or how individuals utilize our system and make recommendations for message types on future messaging. A benefit is that with member account creation, specific locations for messaging to hopefully eliminate some of the message fatigue that we know is present in our community. The benefit to inputting addresses will allow the sender to pinpoint specific locations within the, a city or town or unincorporated areas of Napa County without notifying the entire community. Some features of Alert Napa County that we wanna highlight, although there's many features that are not included in this and there will definitely be more to come. With Alert Napa County, you can download the Everbridge app. Alert Napa County is powered by Everbridge, so when you do look for the App Store, please look for the Everbridge app. Um, you can sign up or sign into your member account, which will ensure that you can review notifications on the notification board that you may not have previously chosen to receive, but may be curious to know about. The Everbridge app works well on wifi where messages from cellular carriers are not available. We know this is very present in unincorporated areas and rural communities. Alert Napa County has the availability to work with third-party vendors to receive resident connection data. This is information that residents have chosen to share publicly and can be accessed through the system, which provides us a separate ability to reach individuals that may not have created member accounts, but did request to share information with a third-party vendor. Creating a member account may allow you to enter numbers, addresses, or emails that may be of loved ones that would not otherwise create a member account, such as family members with disabilities, aging, or our youth. As we transition to the new Alert Napa County, we will not, we will not be able to completely reduce the amount of broad messaging the community receives, but over time and member account creation, in the public, we can decrease the message fatigue by sending notifications by agency, location, or delivery pathways. When creating a member account, you can select quiet periods. This is gonna be new to our community. This will greatly reduce the amount of notifications you receive at undesired hours. Any message that is imminent threat to life or safety can override a member's quiet hour. So there's no concern there, they will still receive messages. Napa County OES is currently working on providing our residents with audio calls of our emergency notifications. There is an option to provide mobile or landline numbers in the member account and this functionality will be tested in the near future. When available, residents with a landline or mobile number in their member account will receive a call from the specific agency initiating the message. And if residents miss a call or need to repeat, they will be able to call back the number and hear previous notifications on the audio bulletin board.
All right, so I know we've been speaking about a lot of these great features with the new Alert Napa County platform, but there's probably people who are out there confused and wondering, wait, I already received NICSIL alerts. How is this gonna affect me and how does this relate to Alert Napa County? Well, if you already receive notifications via the NICSIL platform and you're happy with those, you don't have to do anything. All of the people that receive messages currently will continue to receive messages through Alert Napa County. And you're gonna receive, continue to receive them in the same manner in which you, you currently do. Now, we do still want to encourage people in the community to, um, download the Everbridge app, as Brianna mentioned, and create your member profile because we do believe that it is important to be able to create your customized notifications to make sure that the messages you're receiving are really important to you. Um, however, we also understand that not everyone has a smartphone or even have a computer at home. So, uh, we still have the ability to send those types of messages to those folks.
So this is for, um, Spanish translation, um, and everybody, that's a, a big concern in our community. So a great benefit for those to wish, who wish to receive their messages in Spanish is now it is much easier. So before you would text your zip code to eight 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 seven 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 and then text back ESP to receive messages in Spanish. Now, we have a variety of zip, uh, variety of keywords, as they're called, that you could text to eight 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 seven seven seven. So you do not have to know the zip code in these areas to be part of this event subscription. You just have to know the key codes. So these are where you can set your language preference with, um, the current NICSIL system that is being enveloped into Alert Napa County. If you make a member account, you will choose your language preference there.
Okay, so you'll see there's a lot going on, on this page with all these different logos. Um, so this is just an example of the changes one company, which was NICSIL, has made over the past few years. And also one reason why we're so excited to be branding as Alert Napa County because we're able to, to own the platform and we're not relying on what a third-party company is gonna choose to do with their marketing campaigns.
The hope for Alert Napa County is that resi- residents can customize their member account to fit their lifestyle. This optimization of Alert Napa County creates a more equitable approach to Napa County's community, which has already experienced numerous disasters.
So now, this, uh, any new platform would not be complete without a test of the system. So, uh, a community message will be sent out via the Alert Napa County platform this coming Monday on the tenth at ten AM. So you can expect to see those if you, um, currently receive NICSIL messages or if you decide to create a profile with your, the Alert Napa County account. Um, within that message, we'll be sure to share with the community, community, um, FAQs about the new platform. We'll have a link to where you can go register for your member account, as well as a link to download the application to your cell phones.
Great, well, thank you both so much. Um, gonna bring it back and see if the board has questions, uh, Supervisor Gregory?
Thank you. Uh, you mentioned the app, uh, so it sounds like we look for the generic Everbridge app. And then when you're in there, we look for the Napa County?
So there's an area that says, um, subscription or organization and you will type in Alert Napa County, Napa County, Napa Valley. You could type your city, unincorporated areas, and then we will find this Alert Napa County. So if people wanna type in Pope Valley, Rutherford, we try to understand all the names people may search for Alert Napa County.
Great, that's great, thank you. And we heard a lot about iPaws, uh, a few years ago, haven't heard much since. Is that still a tool of ours?
It is.
And, and maybe a quick description of how it's different?
Sure, so iPaws is not a subscription-based platform. So that is geo-targeted from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So we're able to send out a notification to everyone whose cellphone is located in a particular area without them having been subscribed. So for example, if people are visiting on vacation, or maybe they're visiting family members and we have a mass evacuation, uh, we are able to reach those people who are in our community. This is not, we don't have the ability to send out an iPaws message unless it is a life safety concern. This is not something that we just send out information, you know, about a, a parade or, you know, something that's going on in the community. This has to be a life safety issue and it has to go through a, it's a quick, but it is a process of approval through, um, the people who manage the iPaws system, which is through the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
And does it have to be a federally, federally declared disaster to use iPaws?
No, sir.
Doesn't?
It is not.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much, great presentation.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. It's great to, um, it feels to me like you heard what some of the community concerns were about NICSIL and were able to find a set of solutions that allows some more tailored, um, information to be set out. Um, and I think it will be more useful information too. So I think, uh, just the issue that I wanted to ask about and looking forward to creating a profile on Everbridge. Um, uh, but also whenever we're talking about, um, setting up accounts and things like that, there's a question of making sure that residents still have, um, their privacy, um, respected and also understand what, you know, in creating an account, um, will someone's user data be available to a third party? Can one opt out of that? And, um, if you could speak about that a little bit and how a resident who doesn't want things shared would indicate that in their signup?
Sure. Sure.
Absolutely, that is a big concern, and we actually have that question addressed in our FAQs for anybody looking for information later. But their information that they provide to us is only provided to Alert Napa County. So, we will only use their information for messages that we are sending out or any of the agencies that are included in Alert Napa County.
Got it, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Supervisor Petrosa?
Thank you, Chair Gallagher. So, thank you for this. I think this is great. You answered my questions on bilingual communication. So, I quickly looked at Everbridge. They're a multinational company, right? They do business worldwide. One of the things that spoke to me about their platform is this ability to have two-way communication. So, I'm really interested in that because folks that sign up to Everbridge or Alert Napa County, it shows that they're interested in being informed and being engaged, which is a plus for our community. But that's also an opportunity to redirect them to different sites to be informed more ongoing. Is there an ability to do that?
To direct them to, I'm sorry, to which?
So, to me, like, if we have someone that wants to know more about a wildfire, we should be able to redirect them to our landing page. So, those type of opportunities, so that way they're not just waiting for the alert. They're proactively be more engaged.
Correct, and one of the things that we like to build in is some of the other systems that we utilize. As you know, here in Napa County, we also utilize Zone Haven, which is an area for residents to get more information specific to certain zones, zones that they may live in. And then Ready Napa County is a great platform for them as well.
Yeah, and that's where I'm going with it, is taking the opportunity to educate our community even more in a moment where they want information. So, I think that way, that two-way communication, that two-way ability is going to be key if we can turn that on or if that's on already.
Correct, yes, they'll have a variety of resources in certain messages. As you know, with SMS messages, we're restricted by character counts. You won't see it there. But you will see it if you click on that link with Nixle or if you look in the notification page. There'll be more resources provided.
Got it. And then just remind me, in terms of if you're a county resident or a city resident, how's this going to impact you? So, are the cities also taking advantage of this platform?
Correct, everybody within Napa County is, all municipalities are involved in this system.
Good. Did we kind of help pioneer that, or is it just everyone?
Correct.
Another example of this county and the cities working together, so thank you for that. On the Spanish communication, just one question. Are we still translating that ourselves, or is this platform doing that for us?
Correct, we are still translating ourselves. I'll let Kendra speak to some of the agencies that have chosen to use Google Translate. But as far as Napa County accounts are concerned, we are translating that ourselves with our translation team.
Sure, so unfortunately, technology is only as good as technology can be. With our experiences in the past, we have chosen to still utilize personal translators because the Google Translate function hasn't always been, they don't, they definitely know emergency terms the way that we utilize them. So, we are continuing to use our personal translators. However, we have, over the last year, developed a very, a large and a very good translation team within the county. And we have on-call hours, so they're available 24/7. So, we don't have some of the delays that I think maybe existed in the very beginning of us doing personalized or person-to-person translation. So, I think if people were concerned about getting messages later because we were trying to work on translation, a lot of that has been alleviated.
No, and I appreciate that, you know, the mindfulness of equity and access to information. I think that's critical. We have a commitment to that. But just going back to when we were going out, you know, during the vaccines, going out to our Latino community, you know, we just showed them how and they ran to it, right? We didn't need to provoke. They were just willing. So, that's where the ability to provide the focus of where you can go to become self-help and self-informed. I think giving our community the tools to be engaged is just as important as a message, so food for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, and I imagine you'll be coordinating pretty closely with our communications team to make sure that that's all social media and maybe, you know, a lot of pre-posting, say, hey, this is on the way. And maybe some of these other platforms as well that you mentioned that honestly I'm not familiar with, so I need to become familiar with them. But we can be probably promoting those as well.
Absolutely, and we are about to launch our emergency preparedness campaign. That's when we really get out in the community, participate in multiple events where we will be promoting Everbridge as well as our Zone Haven platform. Our Ready Napa County site has a lot of information. I know that our communication team worked very hard last night to even put information about Alert Napa County on Ready Napa County.
Okay, great, thank you Kendra and Brianna. Thanks very, very much.
Thank you.
Wait, you've got one more. Supervisor Gregory?
Get in the weeds bit here. Because I think it's important we be able to answer questions.
Of course.
So, get in there, three layers, and it says, "Already signed up?", question mark, "Log in" or "Enter all your information." I might say, "Well, I'm already signed up with Nixle, so what do I do now?"
So, this is different. If you were signed up with Nixle, you were just texting a zip code to 888-777. So, you are a new member to this and you will have to enter your information again.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's important.
That's a very good question.
Great question.
We'll add that to the FAQs.
Everybody else good? Do we have any, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, do we have public comment? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Okay, we're going to move to 11A. County Executive Office. Interim County Executive Officer requests adoption of a resolution amending Napa County Policy Manual Part 1, Section 8F concerning the Special Projects Fund allocation procedures. Two, rename the Special Projects Fund to be known as the Community Investment Fund. And three, receive a report regarding the spending plan for the 1% transient occupancy tax supporting affordable housing. So, Ms. Gray?
Yes, I'm happy today to have Jennifer Palmer, the Director of Housing and Homeless Services, and the Deputy CEO, John Buzelik, here to bring this forward to share information about changes that we have regarding affordable housing funding and the Special Projects Fund that will hopefully have a new name at the end of this discussion. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Good morning, Chair Gallagher, and members of the Board of Supervisors. The item before you today is a proposed resolution to amend County Policy Manual Part 1, Section 8F, specifically in regard to the Special Projects Fund allocation procedures. The change is, the section of the policy contains the distribution formula and priorities and guidelines for how the Special Projects Fund is distributed each year. The proposed change is specifically will increase the allocation to parks and open space from its existing 60% to become an 80% distribution. It maintains the arts projects allocation at its current 20% allocation and then removes reference to affordable housing from the allocation. This is in regard, or follow-up from prior board guidance, expressing a desire to increase support for parks and open spaces. Part two of the item is also follow-up from prior guidance from this board, proposing a renaming of the fund from the Special Projects Fund to become known as the Community Investment Fund to better represent the intent. And then part three, since we did touch on this change in the formula would have an impact on affordable housing. Part three of the recommendation is to receive a report from Jennifer Palmer, our Director of Housing and Homeless Services, regarding spending plan for the 1% transient occupancy tax.
Okay, great. So, with that, I have just two slides to frame and as a little bit of level-setting for, more so for the public that might be listening. The transient occupancy tax is a total of 13% tax on rooms. What we're talking about today are two really discreet slices of that tax. What is governed by or allocated into the Special Projects Fund is the increase that occurred in 2004, the 1.5% increase at that time. And the board then established an allocation matrix for that. Then, in 2018, there was a second measure that went to the voters, increasing it again by 1%. That 1% is wholly allocated to workforce housing. And so, that's the 1% that I'm going to talk about. So, I just wanted to make sure we have the framework for that. So, with that as background, then the other bit of context that I think is important is to understand the two sources of funding that we have in place right now for affordable housing investment. One is the Affordable Housing Fund, which is made up of revenues collected at the time fees or at the time permits are pulled. So, it's a permit fee that is deposited into the Affordable Housing Fund. And that is governed by county ordinance, and it has certain restrictions on the funding. So, those funds have to be invested with a 55-year deed restriction on the investment. It is limited to helping up to 120% of area median income. So, we can't invest in projects that don't have deed restrictions for 120%. It annually generates, right now, at the pace of building, about $3.5 million a year. And its current fund balance is $6 million. The TOT Fund is a tax on hotel stays in the unincorporated county. It is allocated for workforce housing. It does not have any language around specific deed restrictions. It also doesn't have a specific restriction to area median income, though it is generally understood that workforce housing would be up to probably 140% of area median income. And to date, those fees began to be collected in 2019 because of what was, what is, an existing RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation, RENA Sharing Agreement with the City of Napa related to Napa Pipe. The county has, to date, just kind of held all of the fees collected in the TOT account there for future use in the affordable housing projects that will come through Napa Pipe. So, we've effectively, knowing that there is workforce housing that was going to be built in Napa Pipe and that we need to be a big investor in that, we've kind of used TOT as like a savings account for that. So, the current fund balance in the TOT Fund is $4 million. So, between the two, there's $10 million right now with an annual regeneration of right just south of $5 million a year. So, with that, what I wanted to bring to the board for discussion and direction is a bit of a change perhaps to the framework of how we're looking at the two funds, given where we are now and some of the work that's happening underway. So, what I want to take a look at is aligning how we invest each of those funds kind of in alignment with what their various restrictions are. So, we do multifamily affordable housing, which always has a 55-year deed restriction on it. And our priorities are for low and very low-income households to benefit from those projects, including special populations like individuals experiencing homelessness, veterans, older adults, that kind of thing. Whereas, we now increasingly are looking to invest in some other projects that are either ownership or workforce-specific and fall maybe a little bit more onto the innovative category, that being our Affordable Accessory Dwelling Unit Loan Program and the Proximity Workforce Loan Program. Neither of those two have a 55-year deed restriction on them. And so, they're better suited to being an ongoing investment of the TOT Fund. Over the next two years, the Affordable Housing Fund will have a total of about $13 million in what is existing and what will be replenished. Whereas, the TOT, because it generates less money annually, will have about $6.5 million. And so, an allocation strategy that keeps the Affordable Housing Fund investing in the larger multifamily projects. We have several big ones coming. We've got Napa Pipe. And there are several other affordable housing projects like Monarch, Landing. Jamboree Housing is considering a permanent supportive housing project here. There will be several that I would like to bring back to the board for consideration in the next couple of months. We need a bigger pot of funds for those. But we do want to have a replenishment strategy, certainly for the proximity loan program. It's one of the most successful things we do. But also, our AADU program, since we launched it officially less than a month ago, we've had 220 homeowners apply already. And we are 34% allocated of the $5 million that was already invested in the program. So, we want to make sure that we have a way to bring back to this board an opportunity to continue what is obviously an extremely successful program. So, that is the framework I wanted to bring for discussion and just receive direction on how that works so that then I could come back with further proposals for allocations of the two funds independently.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to us to have a discussion on, well, we can discuss any of the items, one, two, or three. Do you want to take them in turn, or would you guys like to just discuss everything at the same time? The renaming, the policy change, Ms. Palmer's request. Let's bring it back. Supervisor, sorry, Petrosa?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Gallagher, and I'll just start with the first one. I think we've been talking about this for two to three years, and to finally be able to call the project fund what it is and investment in the community is phenomenal. So, thank you. I know that took a lot of work, too much work. But again, it's a testament to what this board has done about not just taking the money and putting it into the general fund, whether we have the discussion or not, but to really reinvest in the community. So, thank you for that. Jennifer, you made, when you mentioned that number, my ears went up. So, walk me through those numbers of enrollment and the funding of the ADU.
So, we've had 220 homeowners to date submit applications. We have 194 active applications right now. So, a very small number of folks who reached out. In fact, one who isn't even a resident of Napa County but was so excited about the funding, they thought they'd throw their hat in the ring to see if they could get some.
Let's redirect them back to the county.
Right, exactly. So, 194 currently active applications. We have 22 of those applications have moved all the way through to we've already issued a reservation of funds, meaning they are far enough down in their path that they've secured their financing, they're moving towards permits, and they expect within the next 90 days to be able to move forward on it. And so, as we're reserving funding for those homeowners, we're literally allocating that out of the $5 million in the loan. And so, those first 22 are made up of primarily, well, they're all one and two bedrooms, so nobody's applied for a studio yet. And they are, they account for about 34% of the total amount of funds allocated to the program thus far.
So, we haven't ran out of money yet?
Correct.
Okay, but I think that's incredible. I think that's wildly successful so far. So, I'm very interested in that and understanding if there is more need, you know, how do we fund that? But let me just walk back my comments, too. I want to make sure that by allocating more money to parks and also in the arts, it's not that we're walking away from housing, because I think when you read the agenda report, it looked like we were walking away. We're not walking away from housing. We're just prioritizing investing in parks as recreation through that Special Project Fund, which is now named differently. But in terms of the housing, again, I think that's incredible in terms of what we're doing with the ADU. And as we fund some of these, Jennifer, I would really like to come back to the board to humanize what we're doing and who we're helping. And really put, you know, faces to these families that we're helping our community, because I think that's so instrumental. So, on the Affordable Housing Fund, the $6 million, so that's a reserve you mentioned for Napa Pipe, some of it?
Yes.
And how much was that again?
So, I think I should clarify. We, the board has not taken any action to date to actually reserve any funds for Napa Pipe. What has happened is the TOT Fund, no item has come before you because it was sort of being used as a savings account, knowing that there was going to be a need for Napa Pipe. So, the first step in, before bringing to you any proposals about what to do with the Affordable Housing Fund or the TOT was to get your direction on a framework for how to use the two. And then, in the next month or two, I would bring back several different proposals with reservation of funds for specific projects.
Got it, no, I appreciate that. And again, just a shout-out to, you know, our partners in Vison Napa Valley for being willing to tax themselves and be part of that effort. The only other feedback I'll tell you, you know, I am interested in helping projects, whether in the county or in the cities, but also really working closely with our municipalities where I think our school districts are also surplusing property, working with our cities, our town, and our school districts of what's our role as a county and how do we help housing happen in our cities, especially with our city-centric growth policies where we know amenities are. So, to me, I'm really interested in being a partner. And that the benefit to us is maybe we negotiate some RENA housing credits in some of these opportunities, but really encouraging, you know, our cities and our school district or any other government agency that's looking to surplus land. I think there's a role for the county to play in that as being the convener and a partner to all bodies, so thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Cottrell?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rogelich and Ms. Palmer for the presentation. That's really helpful. And I just want to go back to the first item. I'm totally in favor of renaming the Community Investment Fund and to that name. And getting that report was very helpful. So I, understanding, I like seeing that we're increasing an investment to parks and maintaining our support for the arts. So I'm just still would love a little bit more handholding through what happens to this affordable housing funding stream that has been allocated here and to understand what the range of options we're looking at. So maybe you could help me understand that.
Yeah, I think I will defer to John for what the other options were. I can certainly talk about what the amount is in affordable housing and the change, but I'll defer to John first.
Sure. The existing policy allocates the percentages or specifies the percentages as well as the priorities. The proposal here today removes the affordable housing component and reallocates that to prioritize the investment in parks, raising the 20% current for affordable housing to apply to parks, increasing it from 60% to 80%. Other options would be to revise that percentage to something different than the 80/20 being proposed.
Got it. So I, just to understand where we are, we would be creating an opportunity to increase the parks funding and we would be creating a question mark about how we would be making up that loss of funding for affordable housing?
We are answering that question with the 1% TOT Fund. So the 1% TOT Fund right now has not had allocations from it with the understanding that it was reserving funds for a large project. But it will also be useful and more appropriate for the ADU program going forward for future funding as well as the proximity loan housing, which was the recipient of the Special Projects Fund monies in the past. So we will continue our commitment to the proximity loan housing program through the 1% TOT instead of the Special Projects Fund.
Okay, so it's a replacement of dollars?
I think that's, so, yes, this is a tricky question to answer because the 1%, it really has to be used for workforce. It's like we don't have an option to allocate that to something else. The Special Projects Fund is additional funding that came in. Now, what is kind of unique about the two separate slight increases in the TOT and the way that they were allocated, I believe the 20% on the Special Projects Fund goes to the Affordable Housing Fund. It is not going into the TOT Fund. So there is, that is again where like knowing the differences between the two funds is interesting because once, once the funds go into the Affordable Housing Fund, it is governed by all the restrictions that are in the Affordable Housing Fund. So the 1%, I think it feels like we're all sort of loosely talking about the same thing and wanting to make sure that we are highlighting the important investments we are making in affordable housing. And at the same time, this is, this is a change into the overall amount of money that comes into the two big pots. I think that would be the right way to say it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor Gregory.
Thank you. What did you say that the pot was, that the 34% is a part of $5 million? Is that what you said?
Yes.
That's the pot, correct?
$5 million, yeah.
Thank you. And I appreciate, I appreciate the, this other, the 2T money isn't applied to workforce housing. There's some discretion around what that means, but the conventional wisdom is 140% AMI?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and below. I mean, up to 140%. Certainly within Napa County, workforce housing can mean all the way down to 40% area median income.
Sure, or maybe even more, but we have the discretion over that.
Yeah.
Concept.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm certainly in favor of the name change. That's, that's great. And I'm excited that Supervisor Petrosa is getting what he wants there. And it is much more accurate. And so that's great. And thank you so much for the presentation. And I think that what you have outlined makes, absolutely makes sense to do that. I do have a concern about the fact that we are reducing somewhat the funding that's going to be in affordable housing and, you know, without getting into the different pots. Just looking at the overall, I'm absolutely committed to making sure that Parks has the funding that they need. But I, I don't know that I feel that I, we've necessarily been given a lot of options here. I feel that we basically have been given the option of funding for parks really coming from funding for affordable housing. So I think what I would really like to see is for us to commit to making those funds, making funds available to parks somewhere between the $300,000 and $400,000. I think I was reading in the report, it was about 380 or something. But I think depending on what Parks actually says that they would be appropriate for their budget, I'd like to commit to that. But I'd also, with a caveat, that I'd like to see more options for where that funding could come from so that we don't necessarily today have to say that it is definitely coming out of the affordable housing overall pot. Because I think that affordable housing is just as much of a priority as Parks is. And affordable housing is something that I don't think we can afford to reduce at all our commitment to that. So that's just something that I'd like to throw out there as a, as an option for us to maybe decide today. But otherwise, all looks good. And I wanted to see if there's any public comment on this. And any other discussion or items want to move forward? Supervisor Petrosa.
So I want to make sure that the funding for housing is not diminishing. So I want to make sure that's clear. If there is a way, I want to support Parks, you know, and in terms of the potential acquisition of Skyline Park, I am interested in making sure that we fund at 80%, but it should not come at the cost of housing. So how we do that, I think that's direction to staff to come back to us and identify the gap, if there is a gap. So I support, you know, the chair in that comment, but to me, I think we can do both. I don't think this is about picking. So we just have to be creative in terms of when the budget comes up. And these are priorities that the board gets to choose. On the housing part, you know, I do want to go back because it is an issue, but we get a very segmented view of where housing is being built and how it's being built. And you can't ask our city partners to do that because they're more bound by geographic boundaries. We're not. I think, you know, Jennifer, it would be beneficial to get a report more comprehensively to see where housing is being built. I think American Canyon is probably doing a tremendous job of building. They have capacity. But we don't get that comprehensive snapshot of what's happening in our county. And there's no other body to do that but us. Not that we have jurisdiction over our city partners. I want to be crystal clear. But really getting that representative snapshot of where housing is being built. I think I would really appreciate that information. Thank you.
Supervisor Petrosa.
Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds like we're all in agreement that we want to support this increase to parks, but yet we don't want to see any reduction in the funds to affordable housing. And so I think getting more clarity about if, if what we're talking about is, you know, cutting the affordable housing stream out of the Community Investment Fund and then that like-for-like dollar amount is somehow reallocated. I think that's the goal here. I'm not sure kind of what I've heard thus far makes that clear for me. So I'd love any clarity on that. And I appreciate Chair Gallagher, how you, how you framed it to make sure that we are not reducing funding to affordable housing.
So I can answer that with preparation of the budget. So the 1.5% of the 12% general fund TOT is general fund monies. It is the policy that dictates how those monies are calculated and then allocated through the Community Investment Fund. We are proposing that allocation to be simplified from three percentage calculations to two. It is still general fund money. So if the Affordable Housing Fund and the 1% TOT are not sufficient to meet our affordable housing needs, we would still have general fund to lean back on. So even if it isn't in the policy, for example, a few years ago, when we had a significant reduction in TOT due to the pandemic, we were able to supplement the allocations for the Special Projects Fund at that time with general fund monies to ensure that Parks didn't go a significant decrease. So it is still the discretion of the board to use general fund monies for any of these programs above and beyond what the policy states. And we would then ensure in preparation of the budget for affordable housing programs to ensure there is adequate funding in there for the proximity loan for future projects that are coming forward. And the ADU program wants it utilizes its $5 million investment that the board made this year to have those access to funds in the general fund, whether it's in the policy or not in the policy.
Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, I just maybe add a little color to this. Since we've started, doing more to support parks has been an issue. We talked about it for the last six-plus years. And I was on the campaign committee for, the successful campaign committee for Measure I. And it came up more than once that this would be a way to use, get more TOT for housing and maybe then be able to do more with our Community Projects Fund with parks. So these two concepts did kind of blend in committee. It's more of a byproduct, but it came up. So I thought it'd be important for you guys to know that.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Petrosa.
Thank you Chair. You know, I do support, you know, what is outlined here today. And I do appreciate, you know, Ms. Craig talking about, you know, the discretion we have. And I'll just say, I'm going to be very clear, when we have budget workshop, I'm going to be looking at creating funding for affordable housing. And that's a board priority that we have. So I don't see this as a net loss. It's setting expectations of what priorities this board has. And I do agree that you could always come back and ask for more money for housing, but sometimes that becomes a detriment to those that are trying to push affordable housing projects. So the predictability is valuable. And I think that's where we have an ability to do that. And we'll have that opportunity to do that at the budget. So just setting expectations, that might be a request that comes our way. So that way it shows the investment in housing because this is not a moment to walk away from housing and we're not by this action. This is just prioritizing parks, which Supervisor Gregory mentioned. We had, had a discussion around that, but it's coming back with more funding for housing, quite honestly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I just want to reiterate that I don't want to see any reduction in investments in housing. And to Supervisor Petrosa's point, you know, we want to increase our commitment to affordable housing. And also I want to make sure that you are able to get money into those two different buckets and that that's really clear to us so that we're not, you know, taking money out of one and not understanding that, what we're doing exactly. And then also that we absolutely do have that commitment to parks and we will make sure that Parks is getting what they need as well. So whatever direction that that is, whether that's, you know, coming up with additional options that may or may not affect affordable housing, I think, not affect, but in terms of this ask, changing that percentage, I don't know that I'm completely on board with that. I think that if all other options have been looked at or if we could hear what other options might be, then maybe that is not something that has to be done. But I would just hope that we could get as many options as possible and not feel that we had to make a choice between one or the other. So that's it. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you both very, very much for your report and lots to think about. And anything else?
You wanted action, yeah?
Oh, you wanted action?
Yep.
An action or direction?
Madam Chair, public comment?
Oh, public, and again, I think I asked for it once, but I'll ask for it again. Any public comment? All right, seeing none.
I think for number three, it was just direction, which I feel like I have received and then will accordingly bring back to the board reservation of funds requests based on that framework. But I think.
Okay, but you want.
Yeah, parts one and two.
Parts one and two.
We do seek an action.
Do you mind if we take them separately? I like to take them separately, so. Number one is the resolution?
I believe both are in the resolution, Chair.
Oh, they're both in the resolution. Pardon? Okay.
Chair Gallagher, if I may. While our council is looking at that, you know, I'm happy to make a motion that approves what's recommended with a caveat that we come back. When are we going to talk about budget? Just maybe that's a question.
June 6th is the first hearing, but we can take direction at any time, including today or future meetings.
I would want to make sure, I will also support this recommendation that we move forward with the percentages changes with naming the Special Projects Funds to Community Investment Fund, that we come back to talk about augmenting funding for affordable housing, what the process is. And if there is a project between now and then, that we be made aware of it to make sure that there's no lack of funding for any affordable housing projects that are in the queue right now, that we're sending a message loud and clear that this is a priority. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion by Supervisor Petrosa, second by Supervisor Gregory. All those in favor, please say it.
Well, could, oh, no.
More discussion.
I just want to ask a question of the chair because I appreciate that, your point that we want to make sure that we're not looking at, you know, in removing affordable housing from the Community Investment Fund. I hear what everyone is saying, which is we agree that that's a priority. What we're doing here is losing it as part of a policy. So I just wanted to turn to the chair and say, is the motion as amended? Does that cover the concerns that you were trying to get to or is there a different way to frame that motion?
I guess I'm like split the baby here a little bit. I, you know, I just want to make sure, I think to Supervisor Petrosa's point when he said, you know, having assurance is different than each year coming back and saying, hey.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, so.
Chair Gallagher, if I may, my intention is that this is not, that we take it out and we come back with whether we want to make an allocation. It's, it's being removed out of this fund with the hope and desire that we have a discussion around how do we create more funding for affordable housing, which we can do through policy, whether it's a one-time allocation, whether it's an ongoing investment like we have in roads. Every year we contribute $3 million. That's a general, that's from the general fund. We have that ability and that would be my hope. I'm not interested in any policy that diminishes our contribution to affordable housing. I want to be clear. And if that happens, I'm going to change my position on this vote. Right, so I'm just being very clear. So that's why I think for today, I'm interested in making sure that we're funding parks, but we're going to be funding affordable housing at the same level, if not a greater level. And I'm interested in the greater level. So I just want to be clear to manage expectations.
Yeah, I understand. And I think, yeah, I don't know that we could add something, but I, maybe add something like, well, no, that probably wouldn't be, be a good idea. But I was thinking, you know, we will at least include, we will at least fund affordable housing a minimum of an additional $380,000, you know, to make up for the fact that this is policy-wise going away. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All righty, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Great presentation and good discussion. Okay, we are going to take a break until 10:30 and then we will be back and we will take up item, where are we, 14A. So six minutes. Welcome back to our April 4th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. We are on item 14A. Interim County Executive Officer on behalf of the Legislative Subcommittee requests the Board of Supervisors take a position on the following state legislation. To support AB 99, Department of Transportation State Roads and Highways Integrated Pest Management, AB 400, Local Agency Design Build Projects Authorization, SB 706, Public Contracts Progressive Design Build Local Agencies, AB 817, Open Meetings, Teleconferencing, Subsidiary Body, and oppose AB 595, Animal Shelters, 72-Hour Public Notice Euthanasia Study. All right, Ms. Dawson.
Good morning, Chair Gallagher, members of the board. Holly Dawson, Deputy CEO for Communications. I am here to briefly present five bills with recommended action from the Board Legislative Subcommittee. And I do have my colleague Steve Letterer here, who's going to help me with some of these because he's more knowledgeable, and I think Tracy Cleveland, our ag commissioner, may also be on Zoom. First up is AB 99, which is the Department of Transportation State Roads and Highways Integrated Pest Management. And this bill would require the Department of Transportation to adopt a statewide policy to use integrated pest management on state roads and highways and to implement the approaches to roadside vegetation management. Supervisor Gallagher actually requested that we place this item on the Legislative Subcommittee to consider this bill, and the Subcommittee is recommending support. AB 99 is coming up for hearing in the Assembly Transportation Committee on April 24th. And if you have questions or would like additional information, I would ask Steve Letterer to join me.
Do you want to take them all and then ask questions? Yeah.
I can do that.
Great, we'll go to the next one.
Great. Next up is, I'm going to look at AB 400, actually, and SB 706 together. Both of these are public works bills, which are being sponsored by the California State Association of County CSAC, and they have asked for our support. AB 400 would permanently allow local governments to utilize existing state law, which allows them to use the design build procurement process for qualifying public works projects. And SB 706 would allow counties, cities, and special districts to use the progressive design build project delivery method for constructive contract, construction contracts. So they're very similar in scope. And the Legislative Committee is recommending support for both of those bills as well. CSAC is also sponsoring, and RCRC is supporting AB 817, Open Meetings, Teleconferencing. AB 817 would help support and promote civic participation in our committees and commissions. And as we know, there are challenges in recruiting for many of those. This bill would eliminate barriers related to physical or economic limitations, including seniors, persons with disabilities, single parents, caretakers, economically marginalized groups, and others, those who live in rural areas, for example, and are prohibited because of driving distances. AB 817 would provide a very narrow exemption to the, under the Brown Act, for non-decision-making legislative bodies that do not take final action on any legislation, but instead make recommendations, and it would allow those committees and commissions to meet virtually. The last bill for consideration is one that the Legislative Subcommittee is asking you to consider opposing, and this is AB 595, Animal Shelters, 72-Hour Public Notice Euthanasia. CSAC is also opposing this bill. There is an existing law that says that no adoptable animal should be euthanized if it can be adopted into a suitable home. Existing law also declares that it is the policy of the state that no treatable animal should be euthanized. This bill, though, requires all animal shelters to provide public notice at least 72 hours before euthanizing any animal and include the date that an animal is scheduled to be euthanized. And in the case when a decision is made to euthanize an animal, it is because it is a danger to society, and it is not an adoptable animal. So those are the five bills that we've brought to you for consideration today.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? None? Anybody?
I would just--
Supervisor, oh, I got one here. Supervisor Cottrell.
I was just going to say, and probably Supervisor Gregory has some thoughts too, given that we looked at all these bills as part of the Legislative Subcommittee. But I thought it was worth noting that our Director of our local animal shelter came to speak on that final bill and, you know, walked us through the extensive process already in place in deciding whether or not to euthanize an animal. So in her view, there were plenty of procedures already in place, and that's never an off-ramp that they're advocating for unless absolutely necessary. So that was helpful, I thought, to get her input.
Supervisor Gregory, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add that we, I think we took two meetings to get through this list and dug into them pretty deeply, and thanks to Ms. Dawson and her led staff for getting us through it. Maybe to highlight the one, AB 817, just an example of one of our groups that could take benefit, Commission on Aging. I attended their meeting, this last meeting, last week, and shared, their first in-person meeting, and shared with them there's some chance with this legislation they could go back online, and they were very excited about it. I made sure they knew it was not, certainly not a done deal. But there are certain groups like that, that, you know, I think should be able to continue to meet online, and in fact, public participation in a way is more convenient online sometimes. So just wanted to add that note to AB 817.
Great, thank you. Oh, Supervisor Petrosa.
I support other recommendations. Just a caveat on 817, I think it's great, you know, in terms of how it increases public participation, but I do think we have to be mindful. A lot of the work we do requires us to build relationships and trust, especially for some of these regional bodies. So I think we just have this, be mindful of that, I think, monitor how it goes. But to create good governance, you need to sometimes be in person for some of these, you know, regional bodies, I would just say so. Just more of a comment. Thank you.
And Supervisor Petrosa, this bill, if passed, would not require that all of those committees and commissions meet virtually. It allows us to look at them one by one and make those accommodations as appropriate.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment on any of the legislative items? Come on up.
Good morning, Supervisors. Chair Gallagher, John Mark Chappellé, 1560 Laurel Street, to speak on AB 99. I'm urging you to support Assembly Member Connolly's Caltrans Integrated Pest Management Bill, AB 99. It's currently before the Transportation Committee, as you know, for a hearing on April 24th. The goal is to reduce the use of Roundup and other synthetic pesticides by Caltrans. Passage of AB 99 would require Caltrans to only use integrated pest management methods on state roads and highways where integrated pest management has been locally adopted. So basically, it allows us to adopt our own rules for that, and then they have to follow them. Right now, they don't. Emergency pesticide use would still be allowed, but only as a last resort and not the first option. The first line against weeds and invasive species would be mowing, grazing, prescribed burning, and the creation of pollinator highways by way of planting and encouraging native species. We need to work to improve our soils rather than creating toxic dead zones. Besides being a probable carcinogen, according to the International Agency for Research on Cancer, the regular use of Roundup also promotes the creation of superweeds that are Roundup resistant, and it damages the microbiome of the soil. By not using synthetic chemicals in our environment, we can promote soil health for carbon sequestration and biodiversity. Both Humboldt and Mendocino Counties already prohibit Caltrans spraying and have been practicing IPM for the last 35 years. Because of their example, we won't have to recreate the wheel to adopt these environmentally beneficial practices. Without AB 99, Caltrans is exempt from any local rules. AB 99 will allow us to hold them to our standards. AB 99 represents an important step in the right direction. And I would also add to that, that, you know, we're, we're sort of weaning ourself off of Roundup here because it's in our environment, and we know it is. But it's also makes its way into our food system and into our water, and then it bioaccumulates like in breast milk. So it is, it's a real issue. It's a real issue for the environment. It's an issue for the community, and it's especially an issue for kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chappellé. Okay, I will bring it back for action. Do we want to take the supports all, do we take all of it at the same time?
Yeah, I'll move approval of recommendation to support the four bills listed and oppose the one bill listed.
Second.
All right. Supervisor Gregory makes the motion. Supervisor Petrosa is the second. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Do we have any supervisor committee reports or announcements? All right. Oh, Supervisor Petrosa.
Sadly, I don't remember if I reported on our trip to Washington, DC. But we were there with MTC NAVIC, and I'll just say, it was an incredible trip, being able to tell our story in terms of what we do from our region, talking about transportation, housing, and climate, and the cross-section of those issues. MBTH Chairwoman Lissa Lassie was there as well, and same with the Director Kate Miller. But the one thing that was just so clear is, we have to continue to tell the story, but also measure the outcomes we're trying to achieve because our state legislators are going to bat for us, especially in California, but sometimes it just gets lost in translation. So being able to tell what we're doing in a measurable way so we get more funding was very critical. So all in all, great trip.
Great, thank you. And Supervisor Gregory.
Yeah, this is something to occur in the very near future, later this week. It's timely, though, because we approved a contract today with Crestwood, and later this week I'll be heading up to Angwin as part of my work and duties with the Mental Health Board to check out that program and see where our money's going.
Great, that's awesome. Supervisor Cottrell.
Yeah, I was just going to report, we had a LAFCO meeting yesterday that Chair Gallagher and I were the board delegates to, and we talked about the budget and also the work plan. And what was added into the proposed work plan is municipal service review for fire services in the county. And we had a lot of, we had comment from our local fire chiefs who were supportive and talking, we were talking about the juxtaposition of having their data from AP Triton coming into the public view as, at the same time will be helpful, but LAFCO's work will be able to build on that and offer its own independent perspective too. So I think that would be good to look forward to. And then I just wanted to mention that I toured PG&E's research facility last Friday down in San Ramon and saw an example of no EPSS and then EPSS, and the first created a big fireball, and the second was a much smaller fireball. So that was interesting and good to see the efficacy of EPSS.
Wow, cool. That would be fun to go see. Anything with a fireball. All right. Any future agenda items that any of the supervisors would like to see? Okay, seeing none. We have no closed session. All righty, we will now adjourn at 10:44 to the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, at 9:00 AM. Thank you. Oh, and we have blood control at 1:30. Don't forget to be back.
Recording stopped.